Call to order the Board of Education meeting sixteen oh eight. Zero point two, any additions, corrections, or modifications to the board agenda?
We do not.
Okay. Three point oh is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Megan motioned and Jen second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven oh. Okay, next we will have the Pledge of Allegiance and we would like to invite our Dressel student, Sanvika and Harper to lead us. We would also like to invite any other Dressel students that might want to come forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Good job. Alrighty, next I want to mention that each of us are wearing a school tee shirt, even administration, in honor of American Education Week. And so thank you to everybody involved in education, whether that's here or across the nation. Thank you. We appreciate you.
Okay. Then can we take a really quick picture?
You want to do it?
Yes, please.
Okay. Four point oh. We're back together again. Yay. Special recognitions, learning report and student representative report. First, we will start with four point oh one, Dressel Elementary's special recognitions. And Dr. Shannon Case and Dr. Jen Albers, would you come forward and introduce us to your recognized employees, friends?
All right. Again, my name is Pat Shannon Case, principal at Dressel Elementary and joined with Dr. Jen Albers, who's assistant principal. We're going to start with our student honorees. And so our first student is Sanvika. Come on down, Sanvika. So Sanvika is a fourth grade student in Mrs. Pritchard's class. Miss Pritchard is here to support you tonight, so a big thanks to her. So Miss Pritchard had to say, "Sanvika is an amazing student, person, learner, and friend. She is kind to everyone, always supports her classmates, and works so hard at school. Sanvika walks into school every day with a smile on her face, ready to learn. She produces quality work and gives her best effort on everything she does. Her classmates describe Sanvika as kind, empathetic, smart, and a good friend." Another friend says, "Being friends with Sanvika is the best because she is nice and she always wants to play games. I'm so proud of Sanvika and Dressel is so lucky to have her." Coach Carter, our PE teacher, said, "Sanvika is a true gem. She has a sweet, kind heart and is always eager to help her classmates and teachers. Her actions make her a wonderful example of leadership in our school and a friend to everyone around her." Congratulations, Sanvika.
So we have a certificate recognizing you as Student of the Month, so there it's for you, and then we have a tee shirt for you as well. So there's that, but we have to do a picture, so we're going to back up here a little bit. Stand right here in front of the arch and plane, we're going to look at this lady right here. If you'll hold that, there you go. Perfect.
Next up is Harper. Come on down, Harper. So Miss Schaefer, who is our student ambassador leader, had to say, "Harper is an exceptional leader in the Dressel community. As a Dressel ambassador, she leads by example and always with integrity. She works hard in and out of the classroom and always puts things first, puts first things first. She shows empathy to all and is always willing to lend a helping hand. Harper is a perfect example of a Dressel leader." Mrs. Rana, who is her teacher, "Harper is an awesome person. She is a student who always works hard to meet her goals. She's a great friend, works well with others, and leads by example. Having Harper in my class is a joy."
So Harper, we have the certificate also recognizing you as Student of the Month, and we also have a tee shirt for you as well. And let's do a quick picture right here, okay? Slide over this way a little bit, right there. All right. Is that good, Beth?
All right, moving on to staff members. So the first staff member I'd like to honor is Stacy Hartley. Just go through it, it'll be on the recording, Stacy, you can watch tomorrow, all right? Stacy unfortunately couldn't join us tonight, I'll get to that in just a second, but Stacy deserves to be, this is written by one of her peers, "Stacy deserves to be recognized as an outstanding person, coworker, and role model she plays at Dressel. In her role, she has an immense amount of responsibility. Some of her responsibilities seem routine, like taking the temperature of a sick kid, covering a boo-boo with a Band-Aid to make it all better, or holding the trash can for a sick student, which happen multiple times a day. Her role goes beyond the daily routine. While providing top-notch care for students, she follows strict guidelines, ensures student safety, and adheres to best practices. Despite the constant influx of questions and information, she remains accommodating and prioritizes student needs. When faced with urgent situations like a syntegics alert, playground injury, or a medical emergency, Stacy springs into action without hesitation. Her ability to make decisions under pressure is a testament to her professionalism and unwavering dedication. Though she may feel the urgency internally, she maintains a calm and reassuring demeanor, a true mark of a dedicated healthcare professional." So Stacy has also been selected as one of the recipients of the 2024 St. Louis Suburban School Nurses Association Rising Star Award. So this recognizes new school nurses who have impacted their school or community as emerging leaders in school nursing. So she is actually there tonight, receiving this award. They offered her a dinner, so she took that. So we might have to up our game in the future. So shout out Stacy. Stacy is an amazing nurse since coming on board, so shout out to you, Stacy. Next up is Mrs. Olivia Strazuski. Come on down. So Mrs. Strazuski is a first grade teacher at Dressel, year three. This is again written by one of your colleagues. "Olivia is an incredibly hardworking teacher who strives to help each student grow academically and emotionally. She has a growth mindset because she sees and understands all students, whether they're general ed students, special ed students, seeks out resources for them, and alters instruction to the student's level. She is inquisitive by seeking out higher learning and professional development opportunities to enrich students' learning. Olivia is a great collaborator. She works exceptionally well as a team member and seeks out professional support as needed for all student growth. She is always advocating for her students to make sure they are all getting what they need. Lastly, she is empathetic. She understands and respects students' social-emotional environments outside of school. We are so lucky to have Olivia as a part of the Dressel community. Congratulations."
Congratulations. We have a certificate for you recognizing you as Teacher of the Year, so that's for you, and then we have a...
Thank you all. Okay, next, Dr. Shannon Case and Dr. Jen Albers is going to present their learning report, and you will see this broken down by the six success measures for Limburg. It's all yours.
Can you hear me? All right, we're good to go. Here we go. I thought we'd turn on green. So, "Good evening, members of Limburg Board of Education and District Leadership. I am Dr. Pat Shannon Case, Principal at Dressel Elementary, and I am joined by Dr. Jennifer Albers, our Assistant Principal at Dressel. Tonight, we will share insights into the significant work of our students and staff that have taken, that have dressed, our students and staff have undertaken at Dressel over the past year. All the components we discuss tonight are directly tied to the Dressel Compass Plan, which can be reviewed in the written version of the learning report." Next slide. Next slide. There we go. Next slide. Okay. "To begin, we'd like to discuss the focused efforts we undertook after the twenty-two, twenty-three school year and a thorough analysis of our twenty-three, twenty-four winter data. We identified areas where our students could make greater progress. To address these needs, we held building-wide data meetings to pinpoint specific areas of focus for each grade level. Our professional learning communities, PLCs, then developed targeted action plans to support student growth and development. We continue to collaborate with our teams to monitor student progress." Next slide.
This slide represents the impact of these efforts on our students' NWEA/ELA achievement. As you can see in the top graph, our students' progress from fall to spring in twenty-two, twenty-three was stagnant. While learning was occurring, we recognized the need to maximize our students' potential. In contrast, the bottom graph highlights the significant progress made in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We observed substantial increase, a substantial increase in the number of students achieving at higher levels, particularly those who previously scored in the low or below average, represented in red and orange. Next slide.
Similarly, our students' growth data in ELA reflects these positive changes. In twenty-two, twenty-three, a large portion of our students exhibited minimal growth from fall to spring. However, in twenty-three, twenty-four, a significant number of students demonstrate substantial growth, with over thirty percent more students falling into the average, above-average, or high-average growth represented in the yellow, the green, and the blue. While we're proud of our accomplishments, we remain committed to continuous improvement. We believe that our students have the potential to achieve even greater heights." Next slide.
As part of our Compass Plan for this year, we've focused on Limburg life success skills and making them meaningful for our students. While our students consistently demonstrate these skills every day, recognizing and celebrating their efforts sometimes can be challenging. In the first image, you can see how our first-grade team is highlighting students who are displaying these skills by showcasing their achievements on an interactive board in their hallway. The second image shows our third-grade team creating an interactive space where students' voices are brought in, connecting the Limburg life success skills directly to their everyday experiences. Finally, these skills are also integrated into our school-wide social-emotional learning time, allowing both students and teachers to explore and reflect on them together. This initiative is helping us create a more cohesive, student-centered environment where Limburg life success skills are not only recognized but celebrated throughout the school community. Next slide.
At Dressel, we recognize that staff well-being is critical to the success of our school. We are committed to fostering a positive, collaborative, and engaging environment for all of our staff members. Reflecting on the results of our culture and climate survey this year, we are proud of the progress we've made. One highlight is the strong indication that our staff enjoy coming to work each day, which speaks volumes about the positive impact they have on our students and the supportive atmosphere we've worked hard to cultivate. Next slide.
At Dressel, we are incredibly fortunate to have such a dedicated and talented group of teachers, some of which are here, thank you, and staff who invest wholeheartedly in our students. At the same time, we are committed to continuous growth and development of our educators. We are grateful for the opportunity to send our students, or our students, and our teachers to high-quality professional learning sessions, equipping them with new knowledge and strategies that they can bring back to benefit our students, colleagues, and the entire Dressel community. An excellent example of this is shown in the middle picture. The image represents two years of hard work, where teachers applied their learning from a response-to-intervention conference to develop our Dressel master schedule. This schedule ensures that all students have access to every tier of learning and maximizing their opportunities of success. Next slide.
Last break, we surveyed all Dressel students, and one piece of feedback that stood out was the number of students who feel they have a trust adult at school. While this is encouraging, we continue to focus on reaching those students who may not yet feel connected. It's also important to us that students feel they have a meaningful role at Dressel. Over the past two years, we've worked hard to create school-wide leadership opportunities. For example, in the top-right corner, some of our student ambassadors met with a Dressel PTO to present a grant request. These kinds of experiences give our students real-world responsibilities and help them build a true connection to our school community. Next slide.
Finally, we'd like to share a few examples of personalized learning happening at Dressel. Last school year, we began exploring student goal-setting, recognizing its potential to positively impact student outcomes. We've continued this work through this year and the development of the thing and that strategic framework in collaboration with our building leadership team and instructional design coaches. This framework gives our staff a clear direction for our work this year, focused on supporting personalized learning for every student. The picture on the bottom left is an interactive goal board in one of our kindergarten classrooms, where students can actively track and monitor their growth. Additionally, our library media specialist on the right collaborates with grade-level teams to create additional learning opportunities that allow students to extend their learning and deepen their engagement. These efforts are helping us tailor learning to each student's needs, ensuring they have the support and challenges necessary to thrive. Next slide.
Really quick, I just want to recognize the Dressel staff that showed up tonight. We appreciate it. Ms. Thompson, Mrs. Pritchard, Ms. Rumpf, Ms. Jaggy, Ms. Theodore, and Mrs. De Clu, and obviously Ms. Strazuski, so thank you guys for being here tonight. And some of our families who have also are here, yep, I see you sneaking back there. But we appreciate everything you guys do for Dressel. We would not be where we are without all of you. You all play a super important role.
In closing, on behalf of Dr. Albers, the entire Dressel staff, and our students, I want to express our sincere gratitude to the Board of Education and our district leadership for your ongoing support. The progress we've shared tonight is a direct result of the commitment and partnership you provide in helping us build a learning environment where every student can succeed. As we continue to focus on data-driven growth, enhancing professional learning for our educators, and creating meaningful opportunities for both students and staff, we are more confident than ever in the direction we are headed. From our efforts in student goal-setting and personalized learning, to celebrating our staff's dedication and fostering student leadership, the work we're doing at Dressel is setting our students up for long-term success, both academically and personally. We are excited about the continued progress ahead and look forward to collaborating with you as we work together to ensure that every student in our school has the opportunity to thrive. Thank you for your partnership, your trust, and your commitment to our shared vision. Thank you.
Thanks. I have a question.
Nice job.
I just want to say thank you for highlighting at the beginning of your presentation the improvements your building has made with achievement data and the growth they've made in such a quick time. Like, we have all noticed that, and we just want to say great job to you guys, your staff, and your students, so, thank you.
Anybody else? No? We're good? Okay. We're going to move on to, we're going to move on to four point oh three, and that would be our student board representative report, and with the amazing Ms. Laura Pimental.
All right, so for this month's student report, I'm going to be talking a little bit about some conventions that high schoolers were involved in within the past month, and also some academic achievements that we've met, and some things that have been going on with our athletics department. So first, last weekend was the annual Youth and Government Convention, which took place in Jefferson City. We had thirty-four students representing Limburg in our state capital. They were introducing, debating, and passing bills that they wrote. Additionally, ten students received individual awards for their performance, and four students held leadership positions at the convention itself. We also recently had members of our yearbook team attend the 2025 Fall Journalism Convention, sponsored by the Journalism Education Association and the National Scholastic Press Association in Philadelphia. Our yearbook team received an All-American rating from the NSPA, a gold medalist rating from the Columbia Scholastic Press Association, and an All-Missouri rating from the Missouri Interscholastic Journalism Association. Additionally, we had eleven students get recognized on a national level, and one student got fourth place for Photo of the Year, which is the first time in Limburg history that an individual student has placed in the top five on a national level. Additionally, at the beginning of November, our student council hosted the Regional Leadership Conference for the Missouri Association of Student Councils. So we had over seven hundred students and advisors at our high school from thirty-seven different schools around the St. Louis and St. Charles area. The event featured student-led leadership workshops and representatives from Special Olympics Missouri and the Missouri Association of Student Councils. Additionally, a few weeks ago, student council hosted their annual Bonanza event for kids in the community, which featured club booths, custom contests, haunted hallways, and live reptiles for people who wanted to hold snakes. Moving on to some things going on with our athletics, for girls tennis, we had two state qualifying doubles teams. One of them won their district, and the other one placed second in their district. We also had two girls qualify for state in golf, and two students qualify for state in cross-country, and both of them performed incredibly well at the state level. One student finished in twenty-sixth place, and the other student finished in tenth place, running the fastest time in Limburg history. And adding on to that, our LHS cheerleaders placed fourth in their division at the state competition at Mizzou. Moving on to some recent academic accomplishments, we had two seniors score a perfect thirty-six on the ACT, and they received recognition for that. Additionally, we had one student receive the National First Generation Recognition Award from College Board, meaning that she scored in the top ten percent for the PSAT and is a first-generation college student. And then, something interesting going on with our CAPS program, we had four students participate in the Eighth Annual Gateway Arch National Park Engineering Contest. This competition is put on by the park rangers at the arch, and it tasked students with coming up with a plan to connect the, I don't know how to say it, the Eads Bridge? Eads Bridge, yeah, to the north outlook of the arch grounds while still complying with the Americans with Disabilities Act and without altering either of the national historic landmarks. Our four Limburg students worked together with CAPS students from Afton, Bayless, Kirkwood, Oakville, and Secman, and they placed first in the competition out of twelve teams. And then finally, last week, I visited Dressel Elementary School and spoke with students on a variety of topics. One thing that we talked about that stood out to me was a handful of things that students would be introduced to at school, that they actually enjoyed doing so much that it would become one of their hobbies outside of school. So these included things that were mainly introduced in like an art class or design lab, things like knitting, or sculpting, or making little characters out of tinfoil, making stop-motion videos, all things that they had so much fun doing in class that they started doing at home for fun. So personally, I just thought that this was a really cool thing to talk about with them because it kind of shows that they're finding like hobbies and passions in school and taking them home. And then we also talked about some of the different hands-on learning activities that they've had access to as elementary students. Some examples of those included dissecting owl pellets and raising mealworms to learn more about, like biology, science. And then finally, I'd like to share that the next student representative has been selected and will be announced at next month's meeting. It's sad to think that my time on the board is coming to an end, but I'm confident that the next representative will do amazing things.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, at this time, we will take a short break, and that will allow all of you to leave if you would like, because after the break, we'll get into the actual business of the board, so...
And Kristi, I do have a request from Dressel, if they could take a quick group picture while we break, if that's all right. So, we'll do that real quick. Thanks.
All right, we're going to go ahead and continue our meeting. And so five point oh is resolutions. We have none for this evening. Six point oh is citizen communications regarding agenda items. We have none for this evening. Seven point oh is communication. Seven point oh one is our calendar of events. Ms. Fetter?
Thank you. Some of the district events for this month are no school next week, November twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and twenty-ninth, so we hope everyone enjoys their fall break. December second is the Strolling Strings Winter Open Rehearsal for all to attend. December third is the Limburg High School Choir Concert. December fourth is the Limburg High School Orchestra Concert, and December fifth is Limburg High School Band Concert. So two, three, four, five of December, you have strings, choir, orchestra, and band, so lots to see. Technology Board Advisory meets Monday, December ninth. December tenth is Truman and Sperring Orchestra and Middle School Fiddlers Concerts. December eleventh is the Senior Associates Facilities Board Advisory and Sperring Band Concert. Elementary fourth-grade string concerts are on December twelfth. On December sixteenth, we have Truman and Sperring Choir Concerts. December seventeenth is the Finance Advisory Committee Meeting, and... December seventeenth is the Finance Advisory Committee Meeting and Grade Five Strings Concerts. Truman Band Concerts are December eighteenth, and then December nineteenth, we're back here for our board meeting.
Thank you. 7.02 is report of meetings for the entire board. That can be state or other meetings or parent groups. Anybody have anything you want to share?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the last couple of weeks, I've attended the Family Leadership Institute over at Special School District. It was an interesting opportunity to dive into kind of the IEP process and some of the programs and things that are available to us. My children have IEPs, so I've been through that process and had mixed results. So it was interesting to see what resources are available out there, and there's a lot. As a parent who's gone through that, I've been in that space where it's just a whole bunch of questions, and you don't know what resources are available. So I was glad to see that those are there. They talked about a new... A new model for the IEP meetings. Came out of University of Missouri Kansas City called Charting the Life Course. And they mentioned that they were piloting it. Tara, I was gonna ask you, do you know where we're at on that across... Kind of where we're at, just across Lindbergh?
We have been implementing it at the high school. Training for elementary is happening in January. Middle school is happening in February, and then there's a makeup date at the end of February. So by the end of February, all staff K-12 will be trained in that with the expectation that it's fully implemented next school year, in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Awesome. Yeah, it's just a... It's a neat... It's a more interactive IEP conversation that includes the student at the table. One of the things they said that really stuck with me was "nothing about me, without me." And it's kind of just been rolling around in my head since they said it, and I think about what happens in those IEP meetings. So I'm excited to see the engagement we're getting from SSD, and hopefully we see improvements there.
Good. Excellent. Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, we all attended the MSBA Annual Conference in Kansas City, and went to many sessions, learned a lot. I think one thing that I kind of took away from it is I went to a session put on by Park Hill School District. They're a little larger than us. They're just under twelve thousand students, but they have a big, what they call "future-ready" program, which is very similar to our Diploma Plus. And since we've been doing a lot of work in developing that program, I was just interested to see what else was going on in other school districts. And the answer is not much that we're not doing. So it was really nice to see a lot of similarities, especially with just really trying to get students to have those kind of market value assets and what they can have more walking out of our doors than just a high school diploma. And so it just was good to see that. And I think one thing that I saw that was a little different is they had another section specifically for the special education students and what their kind of graduate profile looks like outside of high school. And so, you know, it was just something interesting to look at and think about, and, you know, just how that might maybe fit in here at Lindbergh. It was a great, great place to be and learn, and yeah, that's great.
One of the sessions I attended was on kind of safety and about being proactive instead of reactive. And a lot of the things they talked about were kind of doing. I mean, that was a lot of our pass prop R's were safety upgrades, so we're on top of those. And some of them were kind of like apps, some recording devices. That sounded a little not the best to me, but they discussed it, so... And then I did my refresher training also, so...
Excellent. I attended the AI Symposium, which was the first part of my day, and just talked about AI policies, procedures. There's already been some lawsuits out there, but there's no laws on the books. So the judicial system has to kind of navigate what that is. Proud to brag upon our own Colin back here. He led several sessions, one of which was a panel. And it was very interesting because it was two students who were absolutely dynamic, but in love with the whole AI thing, and a college professor, a superintendent, and then Colin. And Colin just did a really great job. And one thing that came out of it was other districts are watching us. So Colin talked about the policies that we voted in, and one of the individuals in the crowd said, "Oh, you voted that in," and he named the month we did it and knew all about it. So we are again an example. So thank you, Dominic, for your leadership there in the AI realm, which is ever-growing. So, thank you.
One of the sessions that stood out to me, I went to a session about kind of like advertisement and getting sponsorships. So Nixa High School, they sponsor everything. So like, the first down at the football game is brought to you by, and then they give it who's brought to you by. So, but it was really interesting to hear, like, all the things that go into what it takes to get sponsorship. And the one thing that stuck out with me was they talked about putting stipulations in your terms and conditions of your sponsorship. So if there is an avenue of the world that you do not want to sponsor a high school event, whether it be whatever, you need to make sure it's in your terms and conditions because if you get somebody that comes and says, "I want to sponsor," and you say, "We can't," if it's not in your terms and conditions of why, then it could be a big legal hassle. So that was the big thing that stuck out to me. I'm not necessarily advocating for sponsorships of the first down. I'm a big fan of the first-down chant that they do anyway at the football games, so I don't want to hear "first down brought to you by," so... But if you need to, I get it.
I think the session that stood out the most to me was on... There's a high school in the area who has started doing standards-based grading at the high school. And so they just jumped right in. They said that they had initially had a plan to sort of just go a little year at a time and do it slowly, and then they just decided to rip off the Band-Aid and they jumped all in. And everybody seems to be a little nervous, especially the student in the room. She was their student representative. She was very honest that she was nervous about it. But they did it, and we'll see how it goes. This is their first year, so I think that we will have a district to sort of just watch and see what happened. Thought that was interesting.
Being my first year on the board, everything stood out to me. So I've been sitting here listening to you all, thinking, "Well, which one am I gonna talk about?" I loved every single one I went to. I went to a couple that dealt with Senate Bill 727 and the impact that's going to have on public schools, big and small, across our state. Went to those with our CFO, Joelle, and I learned an awful lot. They were very helpful. Also, I went to one about MISHA, Missouri State High School Athletic Activities Association, which I went to high school here at Lindbergh, and I was in an organization that was governed by MISHA, but it was really interesting to learn a lot more in detail about what the rules and regulations are. And again, grateful that our district is... As far as everything they talked about, it was like, yep, as far as I know, we're doing that, we're doing that, we're doing that. So it was wonderful just to see so many passionate people from across the state about public education. It was a great time. Thanks.
Anyone else? Nope, we're ready to go. Okay. 7.03, announcements. Ms. Vetter?
We are... Or not we, but the Lindbergh Schools Board of Education Candidate Filing is coming up. So filing for the Lindbergh Schools Board of Education election will open on Tuesday, December tenth, 2024, at 8:00 a.m. and close on Tuesday, December thirty-first, 2024, at 5:00 p.m. Two positions are available for three-year terms. Candidates must file in person at the St. Louis County Board of Elections Office. The address is 725 Northwest Plaza Drive, St. Anne, Missouri 63074. You can see the district website for more information or contact Central Office with any questions. We will also be holding a candidate information session immediately following tonight's meeting to share information on becoming a board of education member.
Thank you. 7.04 is review of upcoming Board of Education meeting agendas.
We meet again Thursday, December nineteenth, for the Board of Education meeting. Tentative agenda items may include our regular monthly business items, our 2025 Student Board Representative Announcements, Board of Education Candidate Filing Information, second reading and approval of tonight's first reading policies. And Kenner Lee Elementary School is scheduled to be here for recognitions and to present their learning report. These meetings are open to the public, and everyone is encouraged to attend.
Awesome. 7.05 is the MSBA Board Report. We'll watch on the screens.
School Boards Associations Board Report. We begin with a look at the 2024 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with Massa and Moazbo. This year's event was once again held in Kansas City. MSBA President Jonathan Russell got the conference off to a great start at the first general session. During his remarks, he shared the story of how public education transformed his life and ignited his passion for serving on his school board.
Neither my parents nor my grandparents graduated from high school, and statistically, I should have been a dropout. But my experience in public education allowed me to rise above my background. My school and teachers provided the support I needed to thrive. Public education has the power to transform lives, just as it transformed mine, and that's why I'm dedicated to this cause. My education ignited a passion for reading and a desire to serve my state and community. It often feels surreal to participate in school board meetings or even help run my school business. I reflect on how differently my life could have unfolded without the education I received in public schools.
Published author, stand-up comedian, and public school teacher David Edward Garcia was the keynote speaker for the first general session of the conference. He shared the story of his journey from being an at-risk student to graduating with three master's degrees. Garcia ended his presentation by thanking school board members for providing the foundation for student success.
So let this conference, as we're opening off and kicking off, let this conference be the day that says, "Thank you." "Thank you for what you do. Thank you for helping students who might not even believe in themselves. Thank you for possibly being the only positive, for creating a structure that might be the only positive that they get to hear or see. Thank you. Thank you for creating systems that might be the only chance that children have to eat or even survive. Thank you for giving of yourself in this sacred calling to help people who may not have the language to all the time say thank you, but we do it anyways." From the bottom of my heart, let today be the day that says to all of you, "Thank you for saying yes to this sacred task of helping students."
During the conference's third general session and banquet, MSBA presented Champion for Children Awards to Peter Hirschen and Dr. Margie Van Deven. Peter Hirschen served on the Missouri State Board of Education for over twenty-six years before retiring earlier this year. Hirschen told the audience that "much like any achievement, an award like this is not something you earn by yourself."
All good things in education have to be done as a team. When good results happen, you can count on two things. You can count on a leader, and you can count on a team. You will not find anything, whether it be in education or in your chosen other professions, where you do not have leadership and a team.
Former Missouri Education Commissioner Dr. Margie Van Deven spoke next. She said that schools have seen unprecedented challenges in recent years from the pandemic to AI and school safety concerns.
And yet, you in this room have not stepped away from those challenges. You have faced those head-on and talked about, "How do we establish policy? How do we make this work in our communities to serve our children?" And for that, I want to say, as all of you are champions for our children, what hope that brings, what hope in face of all of those things that we're dealing with, that we have volunteers throughout our entire state who understand that strong schools need strong communities, and that strong communities need great schools.
In addition to the outstanding general sessions, the conference featured more than seventy concurrent sessions on a wide range of topics, Missouri's premier education trade show, the Education Expo, MSBA's student showcase of public school programs, and much more. MSBA's delegate assembly also met in conjunction with the annual conference to establish the position statements that will guide advocacy work during the coming year. And finally, on December fifth and sixth, MSBA's Center for Education Safety Team is hosting a two-day safety summit titled, "The Secret to Great Crisis Communications and Emergency Planning." The summit is designed for school leaders focused on crisis planning and will provide valuable insights, best practices, and practical strategies to effectively prepare for and navigate through crises in school settings. Engage with expert speakers and connect with peers to enhance your crisis management skills to keep staff and students safe. Visit the MSBA website for information on registering for the safety summit. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thank you for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we...
Wow. Thank you so very much. Yeah. There will be also another board member refresher training, February fourth and February nineteenth, if anyone didn't take it at the convention thing, at our annual conference. Okay. 8.0, special reports. First, we'll go to the Cabinet. Joelle?
We had our Finance Committee meeting this week, and it's the one where the auditor comes, and so the audit presentation is made to the committee. The employees of the district step out, and the advisory committee members have time with the auditor on their own, so that happened. And then we went through the agenda items, talked a little bit about the child nutrition audit administrative review that was happening this week in the last month. And there was just some good conversation. That's about it.
I just want to say the auditor praised our finance team and explained that we were an easy district to work with. We always got the information to them. And just, I think he actually rated us about three, number three, in all the people he works with. So... Well, I don't know what to say. Maybe have a discussion with them. So... Nice job.
Next, Dr. Tara Sparks.
All right, so Teaching and Learning Board Advisory started off with doing an overview of our Lindbergh Impact Program, the micro-school, which, as an aside, there were forty parents in Diploma Plus in one of their sessions tonight, so that's super exciting. So gave that update to our Teaching and Learning Board Advisory. And then one of the things that Teaching and Learning Board Advisory is going to do this year is they're gonna be kind of a sounding board to our work with the eighth-through-twelfth-grade Standards-Based Learning Task Force that is happening. So had some preliminary conversations about what is an A, what defines an A, and how do we start thinking about things like, what do grades mean? Because I think that's a big part of the conversation as we talk about any kind of grading systems and what we want to achieve in terms of centering student learning at the high school level. And then the other part of the work that we've been doing is really supporting the development of our Navigator, our high school course catalog. So got some additional input from them as we continue to really look at what we want the future of that document to be. I can tell you that we have big ideas and big goals, and there's a couple of tools that we're gonna use, not this year, but moving forward, to help really move that into a more interactive document. So those were some great conversations. And then our Student Life Board Advisory was centered around Mr. Colin Davitt and the use of artificial intelligence. We also went over the AI Use Plan, and if I can just give a shout-out beyond what happened at that board advisory, he's also been working with our library media specialists, and they've been doing work with each of their buildings at faculty meetings to really educate our teachers and help them understand the use policy and how to engage artificial intelligence supports and tools with students. So, some good stuff. Technology Board Advisory has not met since the last time we met, so we'll update you in December. Oh, and it is also about AI. It's a hot topic.
Thank you. Dr. Brian McKenney?
We had a full agenda at our HR Board Advisory. We talked about the Support Staff Hiring Fee Reimbursement Proposal. That's before you this evening, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes. Dr. Ally Mack updated the group on the Support Staff Comprehensive Market Compensation Study, which is moving right along and is on track to be ready for results in January. She also talked about... She also talked about a new program called the Support Staff Leadership Academy that provides support staff the same career advancement opportunities and training that we provide to our teaching staff. So that's a great new program. And we also reviewed the monthly personnel report.
Thank you. Dominic? Do you have anything to report?
I do not. Just, we will have our next one on December 9th, and it'll be about AI.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. 9.0, action items by consent. We have action items by consent, 9.01 to 9.11 this evening. Does anyone wish to remove any of these items for individual consideration? Okay, hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the consent items 9.01 to 9.11?
So moved.
Second. Andrew, motion. And was it Rachel was the second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion passes. 7-0. Individual action items. We have four this evening. 10.01 is a mileage reimbursement for professional learning for those attending the MSBA Conference. And first, we'll approve for Kristi Watch, Jennifer Miller, and Matt Alonso. I will be abstaining from this vote. Do I have a motion to approve the reimbursement of mileage expenses incurred by Kristi Watch, Jennifer Miller, Matt Alonso for attending the MSBA Fall Conference as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Megan, second by Andrew. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any abstentions?
I'll be abstaining.
As will I.
So three abstentions. So the motion passes. 4 to 0. 10.02 is mileage reimbursement for professional learning at the MSBA Conference for Julia Voss, Andrew Lawson, and Rachel Keeler. Do I have a motion to approve the reimbursement of mileage expenses incurred by Julia Voss, Andrew Lawson, and Rachel Keeler for attending the MSBA Fall Conference as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Jen, motion. Matt, second. Any questions? Any abstentions?
I'll be abstaining.
I'll be abstaining.
I'll be abstaining as well. Okay. Others in favor?
Aye.
Others opposed? Motion passes. 4-0. 10.03, required volunteer back check reimbursement and mileage reimbursement for professional learning at the MSBA Conference for Megan Vetter. Do I have a motion to approve the reimbursements of costs incurred by Megan Vetter for the district required volunteer background check and mileage expenses for attending the MSBA Fall Conference as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Andrew, motion. Jen, second. Any questions? Any abstentions?
I will abstain.
Okay. Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 6-0. 10.04, reimbursement for hiring, of hiring fees. Do I have a motion to approve the reimbursement of hiring fees for employees who meet the criteria as presented?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Julia, second by Megan. Any questions?
Motion by Rachel.
Oh, sorry. Who? Rachel? Okay, sorry. Thank you. Any questions? Dr. McKinney would address those.
I just want to say I'm really glad we're doing this. I think it's very beneficial to our staff.
We've gotten a lot of feedback. And, you know, just to underline a point that particularly with our part-time employees, most of whom make less than $20 an hour, and all of our student employees, it takes several days of working to recoup the costs, which we have no control over. We're a public school. It costs, there are expenses to bring people onboard. So this is a great, a great thing. And by retroactively approving this to July 1st, the first day of the fiscal year, we will benefit 103 adult employees and 21 students as soon as the vote is yes. So thank you very much for consideration of this program.
And I understand we're one of three districts that do it, so.
Districts in the region.
In the region.
The other two are outside of the county.
Okay. Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 7.
One abstention.
One abstention. Okay. That wasn't in my notes to ask you. Okay, so that would be six. Now I have to do math. It's the new math, too, so it's hard to do. Just kidding. All right, so motion passes.
Kristi, I think I should probably abstain from this, too. I didn't think about it. I think I-
You, too?
Yes.
Okay. So we have two abstentions. Now I got to redo my math. Give me just a minute. 5-0. Yeah. Yeah, draw the squares. Okay. We'll move along. 11.0, reports. 11.01 for the record. We have three for the record items this evening. They are 11.0101, food service program evaluation; 11.0102, world language curriculum first reading; 11.0103, business curriculum first reading. If you have any questions, you may ask Joelle for the food service, Dr. Sparks for the curriculum first readings in language and business. And then those will be brought back to a meeting in the future for approval. 11.02, other reports. There are none. 11.03 is the review of board policies and/or administrative procedures. So 11.0301, board policies, EBBC, GB1, GBE, GCBDA, GDBDA for the first reading. 11.0302 is administrative procedures, EFAP1, IGBBAP1, KIAP1. These are for informational only. If you have any questions, you can direct them to Dr. Brian McKinney. 11.04 is residential initiated agenda items. There are none for this evening. 12.0 is a recess to conduct our executive session. We've already done that. And 14.0, 14.0 is an adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn Board meeting 1608?
So moved.
Second.
Rachel? Rachel? Okay. Others in favor?
Aye.
Seven opposed. Zero. Motion passes. 7-0. Board meeting 1608 is adjourned.